I'd like to call a Lafayette City Council meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of-
...and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God- ...and justice for all. Clerk conduct a roll call and the appropriate answer is here.
Heidi-
That's me.
Here. Clinker-
Here.
Meyer-
Here.
Reynolds-
Here.
Brown-
Here.
Allers Meyer-
Here.
Williamson-
Here.
Downey-
Here.
Campbell-
Here.
Corn present.
If there are no- no opposition, I would like to change the order of the meeting. We have a couple of presentations and that dog looks might be a little restless. And so, I would like to turn the meeting over to the Lafayette Police Department. Unless anybody wants to oppose.
No, they're in uniform. And armed.
And they're carrying. Go ahead.
Good evening. Patrick Flanley, Chief of Police, Lafayette Police Department. I want to thank the council folks for having me tonight. I have a couple of neat announcements to make this evening. First off, I'd like to start with an award that was given to one of our emergency dispatchers, Rob Batta. You'll come on up, Rob? In 2012, Rob was nominated by NINA, which is the National Emergency Numbers Association, for work that he did with Emergency Eddy, which is one of our outreach programs, and for training children how to use 911 correctly, and then also for speaking to senior citizens on 911. Rob won that award, which is a pretty neat honor for us, and I'm just going to go ahead and read the award that Rob was given. It's the 911 Pioneer Award. In recognition of the pioneering spirit in your leadership, dedication, service, and contributions of the goal of NINA, promoting the vision of NINA, one nation, one number, the Indiana Chapter of NINA proudly recognizes Rob Batta, Lafayette Police Department, as the 2013 Pioneer Award winner. It really is a neat recognition for the service that all of our dispatchers provide, not just Rob. Rob was fortunate enough to be the one recognized, but they all worked very, very well in our dispatch center. Is that my phone? Next, I want to bring our K-9 officer, Albert DiMello, up and his K-9 partner, Tico. It's going to be a pretty emotional moment for AJ and for all of his partners that are here to support him tonight. A very special occasion, sad in one hand, happy on the other, but Tico, after approximately nine years of police service, is going to go happily off into retirement. I'd also like to bring up our K-9 commander, Captain Neil Dale. He's got a few words he wants to say about Tico and all the contributions that he's made. And I think, once you hear some of these statistics, we'll all be sad to see him go, but we'll also be excited about the fact that we do have a replacement coming in for him.
Well, this- excuse me. Will this officer have that, the new animal?
Yes.
Good. Good.
Did you get the old one?
Good afternoon. Our evening. Neil Dale, Captain Lafayette Police. I've been in charge of K-9 program since about 2004, so I've seen Tico through his whole career. Very, very impressive dog with a very impressive handler. AJ was a handler in the military as well before he came here, knows a lot about dogs and really cares about them and part of his family, you can tell by the expression. He doesn't want to make a show of this, but I think he needs to be honored. Tico, since he's been with the Lafayette Police Department, has had over 1,600 deployments for us, 857 of those were narcotics deployments, and 790 patrol deployments. He's helped the Lafayette Police Department confiscate over 67 pounds of marijuana, three and a half ounces of methamphetamine, almost two ounces of heroin, over seven pounds of cocaine, and 11 ounces of crack cocaine. And it's a very small token of appreciation, so I want to present him with this plaque. And it says, Officer Albert DiMello and K-9 Tico, an appreciation for over seven years of service to Lafayette Police Department, the city of Lafayette, February of 2006 to November of 2013. And then the slogan that our K-9 unit uses, "In Canis, Confideris," which is, "In dogs we trust."
It's a good retirement, Tico. We'll take him out to the golf course.
Chase your balls and bring him back to you.
Also, just wanted to take a quick second to recognize AJ's family is here with him, his wife and his daughter, and it really is, when these officers take on this responsibility, it really is a family affair, and these animals become part of their family, as well as the larger police family. And we're sad to see Tico go, but he has earned his day in the twilight. So, thank you very much.
Amen. Thank you. Is there anything else, Chief, that we- can we have the meeting back? Thank you very much, and thanks for everything you folks do. Who have received the minutes of the October 7th and the October 24th meeting, are there any corrections to those minutes? If there are none, I would entertain a motion-
There are October 9th also? I got one for the 9th, well, special, all three, right?
Special meeting was October 9th.
Yeah.
Yes, the 7th, 9th, and 24th.
7th, 9th, and 24th.
Okay.
So, it'd be three. 7, 9, 24.
Yeah.
Any corrections to those minutes? Mr. Downey? Approve we pass. Williamson?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of the city offices.
Clerk's office, monthly September. Water Works Department, monthly September. Water Pollution Control Department, monthly September. Fleet Maintenance Department, monthly September.
All of those reports are on file in the clerk's office during the business hours, and they are available for anybody's inspection. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2013-29, in order to vacate a portion of the public right of way in the city of Lafayette, Indiana, Larry Keller, petitioner, portion of land to the right of 1,001 Queen Street.
I would entertain a motion to remove this from the table, first of all. Mr. Meyer-
I move.
And Mr. Clinker-
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Thank you. So, that has now been removed from the table, and it is ready for consideration again with a motion?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're going to need a motion to approve it, and-
I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2013-39 on second and final reading.
Move to consider, I think it's 2013-29?
Enough. Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
Second. Discussion by members of the common council. Being none, is there a representative of the petitioner?
Evening. Kevin Riley with Riley and Teeter in Shire. I represent the petitioner, Larry Keller. Larry owns the property at 10001 Queen Street, which is adjacent to this portion of America Street. The city owns the property on the other side of this portion of America Street. We have filed a petition requesting that this part of America Street be vacated. We have been working with the corporations' council on this matter. Mr. Chosnick had asked us to obtain a market value appraisal for the property to be vacated. We did obtain that appraisal from Scott Brown of Keller Williams, provided a copy of the appraisal to Mr. Chosnick, and it shows a value for one-half of that portion, or that street portion, to be valued at $1,000 to $1,500. We've offered the city $1,000 for the land, and I have delivered a check for $1,000 to Mr. Chosnick, so we are requesting that you approve the vacation of this portion of America Street, as we requested. One half of the street adjacent, closest to our client's property would go with his property, the other half of the street closest to the city property would go with the city.
Gotten some criticism from some events about this, and would you, and they're both S.C. cats.
Well, this was a petition to vacate an unimproved portion, ever paved or improved by the city. The resolution gives the council some guidance that you adopted quite years ago in terms of type of compensation. So, I mean, you would have the right to say, "Vacate it," since it's unapproved with no compensation, but this particular parcel of real estate has value to the petitioner. He recognized that and agreed that we'd have a market analysis done to determine what that half of that lot, based on its location, based on its unimproved condition, based on the fact that it's small enough, you really can't build a house there without other variances. Looking at the market analysis, I think the $1,000 is fair compensation for the value to the citizens of Lafayette for vacating it. The other half is going to end up going to the city, and maybe that lot can be sold or used for something, since it'll be expanded by that half of the street. So, it'd just be my recommendation that the vacation be permitted, and I do have a check for $1,000 payable to the city of Lafayette from the firm of Riley and Teeter and Shire. I'm assuming it's good.
A little lot of law.
That would be my recommendation, that based on that, that the vacation be approved.
Any questions of Mr. Chosnick or this gentleman?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for members of the audience? There being none, then would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-29?
Heidi-
Aye.
Clinker-
Aye.
Meyer-
Aye.
Reynolds-
Aye.
Brown-
Aye.
Allers Meyer-
Aye.
Williamson-
Aye.
Downey-
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-30.
An ordinance amending section 7.06.990 penalties for parking violations.
It's a pleasure of the council. Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2013-30 on second reading.
Second.
And comments by members of the common council. Mr. Carson?
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. As you know, we are in the process of bringing parking management enforcement in-house under the city of Lafayette, and this is part of that process, where we review the penalties and fines for downtown parking, and we updated those, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions or comments of Mr. Carson? There being none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any members of the audience wish to address this proposal? No comments? Once again, members of the council, none? Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-30?
Heidi-
Aye.
Clinker-
Aye.
Meyer-
Aye.
Reynolds-
Aye.
Brown-
Aye.
Allers Meyer-
Aye.
Williamson-
Aye.
Downey-
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-38.
An amendment to ordinance 2010-11 establish a local Wabash Avenue Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana, 504 Wabash Avenue.
First of all, I would call on Mr. Chosnick and Ms. Amy. Go ahead.
The, this particular piece of property is delinquent in property taxes, and it was determined that it would not be appropriate for the city council until the property taxes are bought current, because, you know, we expect all the property owners to pay their taxes. That's the revenue source for the city, and the revenue source for, you know, a lot of other public agencies, and to get the benefit of being in a historic district, that property owner and taxpayer should be current on his taxes. I think Amy has discussed it with the property owner and petitioner and understands it, and Amy can speak, but it'd be my recommendation that this be, we got another tax payment coming up on November, well, this year, 12th, and it'd be my recommendation that this be tabled to the December meeting to see if he has brought his taxes current. We're talking about the, no, that automatic approval is really only for zoning petitions that come up, so this can be tabled indefinitely, but naturally, I think that there may be some consideration if the property taxes aren't paid in December to consider defeating the ordinance. Mr. Meyer was involved in the Historic Preservation Commission, so I'll let that issue be raised by him in December if we need to.
I don't really have anything to add, but, I'm sorry, Amy Jacobson, Community Development Director. Yes, I did speak with the property owner, and he has told me that he plans to pay the taxes in full with this, before this next due date of November 12th. And I informed him that the city council would likely table it until the December meeting.
Mr. Clinker?
I'll move.
Mr. Meyer?
Second.
All those in favor of the tabling, please answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Tabled until December the second. Ordinance, excuse me, or first reading, ordinance 2013-22.
An ordinance amending sections within chapter 3.04, chapter 8.03, chapter 13.01, and chapter 13.02 as they pretend to inspection fees and fees.
Should we amend that, first of all?
Well, I would bring, the original ordinance was tabled and sent to ordinance committee, so I would have, suggest a motion to bring the original ordinance off the table. Once that is approved, then a motion to amend the ordinance by the amended ordinance that was filed, and then maybe the ordinance committee can explain their recommendations.
Mr. Brown?
I'll move.
Meyer?
Second.
Okay, whatever you guys voted for.
I think I seconded the motion to bring it off the table.
That's what I was, now would you like to have a motion to amend?
We have a vote on that.
Okay, let's vote. We will do that by a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Meyer?
Move to amend ordinance 2013-22 in its entirety as filed on October 29th, 2013.
Second. Discussion by that. I think, Mr. Meyer, you-
Yeah, we met twice with the ordinance committee on this matter. The first time we met, and it was originally filed in the original format, some of the proposed fees were higher than what we would have liked to have seen, and so it was a recommendation of the committee at that point, after discussion with both the Engineers' Office and the Fire Department, to go back and rework it and come back with a better proposal. And so, they did. So, we met in between our last council meeting and this meeting. And this is what you have before you is the amended one, which the committee felt was much more reasonable and in line with what other communities were doing. And so, it was a recommendation by the committee to recommend to the council as a whole to pass and adopt this amended version, and then I'll leave it to Engineers' Office to get into the details.
Mr. Meyer, Mr. Brown, or myself, starting the presentation? None? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Jenny Luschny, City Engineer. As Mr. Meyer explained, we did make some revisions to the fees, and I'll just briefly go over what those were. Originally, we had a base fee for both residential and commercial permits, and that base fee was $200 for residential and $500 for commercial, and then your square footage fee would be on top of that. As we calculated that, it seemed to inflate or create a larger fee for a smaller type of a project than a larger project. So, we went back and we scaled that back, and rather than have a base fee, we decided to do a minimum fee, so that your square footage would be charged on the property, but the base fee would not be there. So, your minimum fee for residential was $200, and your minimum fee for commercial was $250. Then we also looked at the very large projects, like a Nanshan or an Alcoa, and the fees, the way that would be calculated, would be over $100,000, and we thought, well, that's not very reasonable with what we need to do on those types of facilities. So, we went back and looked at our level of effort on that, what we do for permitting, what we do for inspections on that type of a permit, and we decided that $10,000 maximum fee per building permit would be enough to cover any situation, like a hospital, like a Nanshan, like a hotel, things like that. So, those are the main fees, or main changes. There was one more, and this was related to discussion with the city attorney, and it had to do with making sure that your fees are current and your unpaid fines are current before you would get a new permit. So, if you had any unpaid fines, and we did add that to section 13.01.060. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ron Ritchie is here, too, to talk a little bit about the fire fees.
What you cover, how that compares, you mentioned $10,000, how that compares with other communities?
In caucus, we did pass out a sheet, and it's this one, and I believe that you all have that sheet. If you look at Lafayette's current versus Lafayette's proposed, depending on the type of permit that you're at, we're still about halfway amongst all the cities, similar Class II cities. So, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest. We maintained about the middle.
Mr. Ritchie, would you like to say something?
Assistant Chief Ron Ritchie, Lafayette Fire Department. Thank you. You're fine. Thank you. There's, this is two portions of a change to the ordinance. We work very, very closely with the Engineers' Office during new construction projects involving commercial structures. Commercial mean anything other than a one or two-family dwelling, so any place where you have the public comes in and gets services or what have you. There's approximately 4,000 of those buildings in town. Where we work with Jenny's office is, is if you have a new construction, and they have a sprinkler system, a fire alarm system, or a kitchen hood suppression system, we do a plan review in addition to what Jenny's office does. In the past, we've never charged for that. So, we're talking, last year, we did around 80 of those types of inspections, so it's very minimal as far as the new construction portion of this, and for the first time, you have fees that we've established, which are exactly, they mirror some of the other communities in the state of Indiana, so we're consistent. The second portion is a little bit different, unique, and it has really nothing to do with engineering. It has everything to do with the Fire Department, and that's where we do existing fire inspections on businesses. The Fire Chief by statute is required to go and inspect businesses regularly, and so we take that charge very seriously. That's where we go back to around 4,000 occupancies, and quite frankly, we just do not have enough staff to be able to cover all the occupancies that we need to do. We average around 3,000 per year, but unfortunately, half of those 3,000 involve going back for a second or a third visit to ensure that the violations have been corrected. We've tried all kinds of ways before we get to this point. We have done everything we could possibly do to do more with less. We've installed great software that helps increase our productivity about 40%. We've went to civilian inspectors, where we used to have career firefighters that was doing that. That saved us a tremendous amount of money. We've used the website and come up with checklists to try to speed the process up, and so we're basically at this point now where this is the next step, and this is something that many communities are doing. In an Applus Fire Department, for example, they just implemented this this past year, and our fees are actually quite a bit substantially lower than what in an Applus is. Valparaiso, Indiana, has a similar, has inspection fees, and there's others. So, what it basically will entail is, it'd be, if we do an initial inspection, there'll be a $50 charge. If there's no major violations, the customer, or the business owner or tenant, can fill out a compliance affidavit form and send it into our office notifying us that all the violations have been fixed, so then they would not have to incur an additional inspection fee. So, we anticipate that being something that a lot of people will be enthused about doing. We've tried doing that in the past, and we've only gotten 4% back of our total inspections, because there's really nothing, there's no motivation. So, that's something we're excited about. The other thing is, is that we do risk assessments, or risk inspections now. So, in other words, if you have a nursing home, it makes sense that that would be a higher risk for us, just because of the natures of the occupants and so forth. That would be a higher risk we want to focus on versus a flower shop or some little small shop downtown. So, some of the smaller shops, we anticipate only inspecting those once on a three-year basis. So, you're talking $50 for a three-year basis, you're talking around $17, $18 per year for majority, over half of these 4,000 businesses. The others, like I said, major hospitals, things like that, it will be $50, and if they do the compliance affidavit, that'd be it. So, that's the newness of the program.
Questions of this gentleman? And once again, any questions of the city engineer? Thank you both. A comment to the television people. Did you get the dog on television? You got it. Thank you very much. Any comments from members of the audience? Back to the council members? None? Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-22?
Yeah, I think that there was a motion to amend that needs to be voted, and then vote on the amended ordinance.
Okay, good. So, do you want to vote on the amendment or on the amended form?
On the amendment. That was my motion, and I think that's been on the table.
That'll be the first vote. Okay. We will have a roll call vote on that, please.
Heidi-
Aye.
Clinker-
Aye.
Meyer-
Aye.
Reynolds-
Aye.
Brown-
Aye.
Allers Meyer-
Aye.
Williamson-
Aye.
Downey-
Aye.
Amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, on the amended form of ordinance 2013-22.
Need a motion to approve it?
An emotion?
Yes. Move to approve ordinance 2013-22 as amended.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds, thank you. Then would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on that particular?
Heidi-
Aye.
Clinker-
Aye.
Meyer-
Aye.
Reynolds-
Aye.
Brown-
Aye.
Allers Meyer-
Aye.
Williamson-
Aye.
Downey-
Aye.
Amendment ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-39.
An ordinance to amend chapter 7.06, chapter 7.09, section 13.03, 01.0, to address certain parking matters, including yard parking and inoperable vehicles.
Mr. Downey?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2013-39 on-
Second.
Any comments or questions by members of the common council? There being none. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the councils, you-
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the councils, you see I sponsor this ordinance like with several other ordinances over the years. You know, we continue to update those and try to adapt those ordinances to meet the needs of our community, to meet the needs of our neighborhoods as we work to promote quality of life, neighborhood strength and those different types of things. This ordinance reflects that. Several of the councilmen had contacted me about different things they were concerned about in their districts through input from neighborhood groups and then we spent several hours where myself, Stanley Knight, Jackie Chosnick, the deputy city attorney, we just literally drove around the town in a vehicle and looked at various scenarios, boats, trailers, junk cars, people wedging stuff in their yards and tried to work this ordinance through there and basically, you know, changed some of the definitions that we think will allow for appropriate, fair enforcement but will give our ordinance enforcement people the tools they need to clean that up. I can tell you that that's one of the number one complaints that I receive are those types of trucks, trailers, boats, stuff, junk on property and this will help address some of that and so we would appreciate your approval. Like I said, we put quite a bit of time into this trying to get it fair but enforceable to the point where I said we actually drove around, took pictures, looked at examples and then tried to make the language work to do those things in our neighborhood that we need to protect property values of the other people that are around that may have to live by some of these things.
Any questions of the mayor? On the, what's the process? You send, they send a letter, the inspector sends a letter to the person, they've got 10 or 15 or 20 days, then what happens?
Well, it all depends. I mean, there are different five-day violations, 15-day violations, depending if you're parked on the street or up in your driveway. There's seven day if you're parked in a yard. If you're on the street and there's no license plate, then it's 24 hours. So, you know, it depends on the violation itself but typically, it gets the orange sticker which designates five, 15 day depending on which it is. But if it's in a yard, then they get a letter from the engineer's office and that's seven days. We do a reinspection, we do a follow-up and then if they don't move it, then we issue a fine.
Oh, and complaint about Mrs. Murray?
I mean, there's several ways you can do it. I mean, you can notify the police department, you can call directly to the engineer's department, you can call my office and then I disperse them to the appropriate staff people, you can use the action center that we have on the city website that allows you to go to the action center and make a complaint. Some people send me letters with pictures and it's still used kind of the old-fashioned mail. So, all of those means are acceptable and we understand that. You know, I had that discussion the other day with the gentleman who felt like maybe his neighbors had just, you know, called in on him and, you know, actually Stanley had saw that itself because what we do, because we know people are afraid sometimes to call in, right? Fear of retribution and it makes it uncomfortable and we understand the importance of keeping the neighborhood cleaned up. So, Stanley and Julie, they're both here and something else going on, but primarily, they follow each week the day behind the trash route. So, if your trash is on route, on Tuesday, they're following behind the Monday trash route because everybody had a chance to put everything out, get things cleaned up, right? So, they follow that trash route and Stanley takes north of Green Bush and Julie takes south of Green Bush and one of them takes east of 14th and one of them takes west of 14th, wherever that trash route is. And the next day, they divide the next trash route into a north, south, east, west and then they check and so as much as they can, they follow the trash routes one day behind them looking for possible violations because we do want to stay caught up on it and we do know that people are reluctant sometime to turn something in because they're afraid. And so, we do do that also to try to find as many things as we can.
Is it anonymous then? If someone calls, it is anonymous?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, for the most part, but I mean, it doesn't take people too long to try to figure things out, but sometimes they make the wrong assumption too. So, we try to, you know, be as aware of that as possible in the way that we handle it. Many of the neighborhood groups help with that. You know, in their newsletters, they put the 10 most common violations and they try to help promote getting things cleaned up and that if you don't, the city will be there. And so, we try to use the neighborhood groups to, you know, obviously would prefer voluntary compliance. If we didn't have to be in the ordinance enforcement business at all, be fine with me. But, I mean, we just know that that's not reality and sometimes we have some tough cases where, you know, Ed's office has to get involved with court orders and we actually go in and do cleanups of our own and even inside houses, we've had to go in before for some of the conditions that were so deplorable. So, it's complicated, it's a variety of different things, it's finding that balance but it is an important task that we do and this ordinance will help make that one piece of it a little bit easier.
You've got five days, 10 days, 15 days if it goes through the engineer's office?
Five day, 24 hour, 79 14s, five day and 15 days are mostly orange stickered through the police department. And that parking in the yard, things like that, those are handled mostly through the engineer. 79 14s for on private property, if a private property owner doesn't want to tow it away themselves and they want the police department to do, they can do what's called a 79 14. So, we have the 24 hour if you don't have any plate on it at all and it's on a public street, there's just, I mean, there's a lot of variation. Some of those, you know, are within state law too, some of them are more ordinance-based. So, it's, police and Stanley have to work together and we kind of have to do dual approaches sometime depending on what exactly is happening.
Comments? Thanks, Mayor. Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none. Once again, anything the council would like to ask? There being none, would you conduct a roll call vote, please, on ordinance 2013-39?
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
ordinance 2013-40.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Indian County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to GB, W.K. Baldwin petitioner, 120 South Faraby Drive.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Allers Meyer?
I move we hear and consider ordinance 2013-40.
Brown?
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? There being none? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Dan Teeter, Attorney General, Teeter &amp; Schreier, represent Ken Baldwin, who's the petitioner in this matter. We're asking for a rezone to general business for this particular site. It's located at 120 South Faraby Drive. We received a favorable staff report, unanimous area plan recommendation to this council as well for this rezoning. This is one of the many properties in this area that's been rezoned by the council over the years. In fact, most of the area now is GB on the Faraby Drive area, a little bit of I-3 remaining but that's waning as time goes along, it seems like. This site has a 4,600 square foot building on it. I believe it was initially built for Lafayette Pool and Patio. At that time, Lafayette Pool and Patio did some manufacturing, built pools, so it was appropriate. Since that time, it's really been for commercial use. The latest has been a lingerie shop. That's no longer there but we're trying to get the use to reflect the zone, so that's one of the reasons we're here. Since the, I believe that since that time and in the future as well, we're going to see more commercial for this area and for this site as well. I think it reflects the area. We would respectfully request your approval on this, be happy to answer any questions and I would hope for Mr. Chosnick's sake that if my check doesn't clear that at least I get a notice or a sticker. No, we'll come at you.
Any questions of us here? Excuse me, Mr. Meyer?
What is the intended use then of your client?
He's got it for rent right now, you know, but everything that's been there in the past has been pretty good commercial uses. I think he's intending on that rather than some of the other uses that you've seen in that area. Well, I
Not for the lingerie shop.
Yeah, he's not looking to do that.
Okay.
It's turning more into, you know, true commercial, things that are good for not only the neighborhood but for the city as well.
Any other questions? Members of the audience wish to address this issue? Comments? Once again, the council? Would the clerk then please conduct a roll call vote on this particular?
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Orderance 2013-40.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Indian County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from PDCC to CB, city of Lafayette petitioner, 103 South Forest Street.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Clinker?
I move we hear ordinance 2013-41.
Second. Any comments or questions prior to this gentleman's presentation? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. This ordinance is asking for a rezoning of the former Queen Anne Court, Solar Baker property. The redevelopment commission had acquired this property for its redevelopment. It's a pre- rezoning with planned development that had expired, so we've gone through the process now to get a zone central business district so that we can solicit proposals for development of the site. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
You know, off the top, what's the difference between CB and GB? Is it like closer to the street or what?
Yeah, CB is central business district, which is basically the downtown area of this property, joins the downtown in that zoning district, so we thought that'd be the most appropriate. So, it's a more urban classification of zoning with the buildings would be closer to the streets and more urban design.
So, does this, does this extend the central business then further south?
One partial south, correct.
And is there, are there plans in the future to continue extending that any further or?
Not at this time, no.
The central business designation, does that change the requirements for parking for this business?
It falls within, the parking regulations would fall within that zoning classification, which is you don't have to provide quite as much parking as you would in general business and other zoning classifications. Right, thank you.
Any questions by members of the audience? And anything else by the council?
We got one.
Yes, sir. Would you come forward, please? Would you step forward and identify yourself, please?
I'm Brian Sri and I was wondering if
Yes, please.
Oh, 1616 Center. Okay. And I was wondering if you might move that apartment across the street to that property and then tear down the other building and have a half block of parking or buildings or whatever.
Carson, I guess you better address that.
Because it'd be a nice building there and it'd open, and if you tore down that restaurant that's never busy, apartments upstairs could be replaced with other apartments downtown. Yeah, it's, it's a brick and blue. Oh, okay. I was just curious if it could be moved to there and then tear down another building and have a half block of parking. Okay. It's gonna stay there. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments by members of the audience?
Does Steiny ever get buried up there?
The, the, whatever they call it?
Yeah.
It had a name?
Steiny, Steiny was his name.
You know that, you're the only one old enough.
I'm old enough to know that. Steiny was his name and I saw him and he was about five feet.
Would the clerk please make note of that?
Make a note of that. He was alive, he was dead when I see.
Clerk doesn't put that in, don't approve the minutes.
Fine.
Good.
How about nine?
Yeah. Any questions by members of the common council? Any
Yes, he did.
Clerk now conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-40.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Yes, ma'am.
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Orderance 2013-40.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Indian County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from PDCC to CB, city of Lafayette petitioner, 103 South Forest Street.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Clinker?
I move we hear ordinance 2013-41.
Second. Any comments or questions prior to this gentleman's presentation? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. This ordinance is asking for a rezoning of the former Queen Anne Court, Solar Baker property. The redevelopment commission had acquired this property for its redevelopment. It's a pre- rezoning with planned development that had expired, so we've gone through the process now to get a zone central business district so that we can solicit proposals for development of the site. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
You know, off the top, what's the difference between CB and GB? Is it like closer to the street or what?
Yeah, CB is central business district, which is basically the downtown area of this property, joins the downtown in that zoning district, so we thought that'd be the most appropriate. So, it's a more urban classification of zoning with the buildings would be closer to the streets and more urban design.
So, does this, does this extend the central business then further south?
One parcel south, correct.
And is there, are there plans in the future to continue extending that any further or?
Not at this time, no.
The central business designation, does that change the requirements for parking for this business?
It falls within, the parking regulations would fall within that zoning classification, which is you don't have to provide quite as much parking as you would in general business and other zoning classifications. Right, thank you.
Any questions by members of the audience? And anything else by the council?
We got one.
Yes, sir. Would you come forward, please? Would you step forward and identify yourself, please?
I'm Brian Sri and I was wondering if
Yes, please.
Oh, 1616 Center. Okay. And I was wondering if you might move that apartment across the street to that property and then tear down the other building and have a half block of parking or buildings or whatever.
Carson, I guess you better address that.
Because it'd be a nice building there and it'd open, and if you tore down that restaurant that's never busy, apartments upstairs could be replaced with other apartments downtown. Yeah, it's, it's a brick and blue.
That's, that's
Oh, okay. I was just curious if it could be moved to there and then tear down another building and have a half block of parking. Okay. It's gonna stay there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments by members of the audience?
Did Steiny ever get buried up there?
The, the, whatever they call it?
Yeah.
It had a name?
Steiny, Steiny was his name.
You know that, you're the only one old enough.
I'm old enough to know that. Steiny was his name and I saw him and he was about five feet.
Would the clerk please make note of that?
Make a note of that. He was alive, he was dead when I see.
Clerk doesn't put that in, don't approve the minutes.
Fine.
Good.
How about nine?
Yeah. Any questions by members of the common council?
I don't want.
Any
Yes, he did.
Clerk now conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-40.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Yes, ma'am.
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Orderance passes eight to zero. And, uh, I was wondering if you might move that apartment across the street to that property and then tear down the other building and have a half block of parking or buildings or whatever.
Carson, I guess you better address that, I'm, that-
Because it'd be a nice building there and it'd open, and if we tore down that restaurant that's never busy, apartments upstairs could be replaced with other apartments downtown. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, brick and blue. Oh, okay. I was just curious if, if it could be moved to there and then tear down another building and have a half block of parking. Okay. It's gonna say there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments by members of the audience?
Did Steiny ever get buried up there? Yeah.
What, it had a name?
Steiny, Steiny was his name. I'm old enough for that. Steiny was his name and I saw him, and he was about five feet.
Would the clerk please make note of that?
Make a note of that. He was alive, he was dead when I see.
If the clerk doesn't put that in, don't approve the minutes, man.
Fine.
Good.
How about nine?
Any questions by members of the common council?
I don't want.
Any- Clerk now conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand and thirteen dash four, nope.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, yes, ma'am.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Orders pass as eight to zero.
The name was Steiny, right?
Steiny.
I got, you're gonna spell that, Mr. Heidi.
Resolutions for consideration.
I'm old enough to know that, right?
Okay, uh, resolution two thousand thirteen dash seventeen, a resolution for the two thousand fourteen common council calendar of meetings.
What is the pleasure on the council on this, Mr. Reynolds?
Hear and approve twenty thirteen dash seventeen resolution.
Meyer?
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion by members of the common council, you've all had this, uh, these dates for examination for the last month or so. Are there any conflicts that you would recognize that, uh, be addressed prior to the approval of this?
If I may, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll note on the, um, since my office kind of puts this calendar together, um, on the January two thousand fourteen meeting, the caucus meeting is on the second, which is a Thursday, which is not, which is unusual, but with, um, after polling some of you guys, we decided instead of moving it back another week to go ahead and have it on the second, so, and then the, the, uh, meeting will be on January the sixth for two thousand fourteen, so just to maybe mark your calendars, you know?
Does that agree with your vacation calendar, Mr. Heidi?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. It's imminent. Would anybody in the audience like to address this? It's, uh, pretty much cut and dry, it's concerned our meetings. They will continue to be on the caucus on the Wednesday before the first Monday of the month, with the exception of the change that, uh, Mrs. Murray has talked about, which is January the second, as opposed to having it on New Year's Day. Thirty.
Yeah.
December thirtieth will be Tuesday.
That being between the holidays, do we think that's, do we all move that one back a week?
I-
Or will it, will it be on the next ordinance too? Or, you know, next year's ordinance, will that be on there or, because it's January fifteen, so if we want to change it at that time, we can worry about it then, right?
Good.
No comments, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on resolution two thousand thirteen dash seventeen?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Uh, reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. The mayor. Miscellaneous and new business. The Davy Tree Group short presentation on the city tree inventory, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Belinda Keiger, Community Parks and Urban Forestry Manager for, for the City of Lafayette. Since two thousand ten, the city has had a street tree inventory conducted for all the trees in the public right-of-way. And we've done this in four phases by the Davy Tree Group. And what an inventory does for us is it helps the city better manage their trees. It tells us what kind of trees we have, what condition the trees are in, how large they are, how old they are, what hazardous trees are out there that need to be removed for public safety, where should we be planting trees. So it's, it's an excellent tool for us to manage, uh, the urban forestry, to, to create a healthier urban forest, which helps to create a higher quality of life in our community. So tonight, Erin Flint from the Davy Tree Group is here to present the final summary of the city's street tree inventory.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Erin Flint, uh, Davy Resource Group, Urban Forester with the Davy Tree Expert Company. Um, thank you for your time, by the way, um, and thank you, Belinda, for inviting me, uh, to present your, for your inventory, your tree inventory. Uh, in front of you, you have the two pager with a chart, um, on the front, graphs on front and back, I'll be talking about that specifically, but also in your files, you also have like a write-up of, and what, of a write-up of the last inventory redid. Um, so it, it goes over the phase four inventory and it goes into some further wording as far as the overall inventory and the benefits, but a lot of that I'm gonna cover with this two pager. So yes, uh, since two thousand ten, Davy, Davy Resource Group has, uh, done your inventory, uh, every, uh, every year of those, every year there was twenty-one thousand dollars put toward this inventory. About over five thousand tree stumps and planting sites for inventory within your street right-of-way. Um, and the, uh, the majority of them at least, not along your, your state streets or your county streets, uh, that are in your cities. But, um, so your inventory is right now, it's housed in Davy's Treekeeper Management Software System. Um, that allows Belinda to track what maintenance is need done, where her inventory is at, whatever reports she wants to put into the inventory related to each individual tree that is out there in the inventory. The inventory states that there is twenty thousand nine hundred sites in total, um, nine thousand, or sorry, ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-five of those are your trees. Nine thousand one hundred and seventy-one of those are vacant planting sites, meaning that we observe, um, just, just above-ground, um, situations where there is space available for trees, either between your sidewalks or behind your sidewalks, that sort of thing, or in your, in your median, things like that. Uh, then there were also eight hundred and forty-four stumps that were located within the street right-of-ways as well. So, um, the, the two pager goes through your benefits, it goes through a few recommendations, and on the flip side, it'll talk about prioritizing in your maintenance. So we'll first focus on the benefits, uh, of your trees. What we've done with your inventory is we have, um, formatted it to fit into the ITree Streets, uh, application provided by the US Forest Service. And what that is, is a street tree tool for urban forest managers to assess the benefits of their trees, their economic benefits, their environmental benefits, that sort of thing. There are five benefits that it focuses on. One is your stormwater runoff, which you have your, your dollar value there of, um, three hundred, about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Then you have your aesthetic and other value, that focuses primarily on property value increases. Um, so you have a hundred and sixty-two thousand, well, a hundred and sixty-three thousand annually, um, that it provides, that your trees, the ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-five trees provide your community. Then you have three hundred and forty-nine thousand, or sorry, three hundred and fifty thousand for energy, um, savings, so that's, uh, electric for cooling your house, heating, or natural gas, whatever, for cooling and heating your house, that sort of thing. Uh, then you have your fifty, your air quality, um, improvement, and there's fifty-five thousand dollars there, and then you have your carbon sequestration, how much carbon your trees take out of your air, and that's forty-six thousand. So in total, annually, your trees are providing you over a million dollars in benefits, considering just those five benefits. That's not including like your quality of life, your, your psychological, you know, uh, relationship with trees, that sort of thing, it's just those five benefits. So then I was working with Belinda and we came up with annual costs related to trees, um, related to, to maintaining your trees, your street trees. Um, so combining those two, we get a net benefit of, up there at the top, of five hundred seventy-six thousand dollars annually from your trees. That's great. It's actually giving you a benefit cost ratio of two dollars and thirty cents, two dollars and thirty cents for every dollar the city is spending on maintaining its streets. That's planting, that's removal, that's pruning, all of that. So, um, so that's just, that's what the ITree Street analysis reports on, on your tree benefits. Any questions related to that?
I'm, excuse me. How, how do you determine the stormwater, the, uh, the benefit of trees for stormwater?
Sure, yeah, and think of it, trees are like reservoirs, they have this leaf surface area, trunk surface area, branches, that slows the water from reaching your stormwater drains. Also, you know, taking up water themselves lowers the volume that reaches your stormwater drains, that sort of thing. So, um, I can provide, um, Belinda to get, to, to give you what the calculations are that they, that they developed this model for-
I believe you.
That's based on, that's all of what it is. It, it, it's volume, concentration, you know, all that, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Just one. Yes, sir.
Um, at the top, it's, when you talk about, uh, on the back page, uh, prioritize tree maintenance?
We'll get to that.
Oh.
Yep, we'll get that. Okay, sorry. Um, then, the, okay, so then we have three graphs down there at the bottom, and one talks about your species frequency. Um, it's showing that silver maple, red maple, sugar maple, collary pear, falling crabapple, your top five species represented along your streets. Um, you'll see a red line there, that red line is about ten percent. A general recommendation is that a street, a street tree population, any tree population, to be sustainable, be, have a species that is no more than ten percent of population, so silver maples, twelve percent, greater. That's something that we want to concentrate on, we want to have that below ten percent. You see that red maple, sugar maple, collary pear, crabapple are approaching that ten percent. Those are things we want to concentrate on and limiting those species populations, so those are things that you can pull from inventory.
Excuse me, I noticed you don't have ash trees on here.
Right.
And I see a ton of them around us.
Right, they're-
You mean a ton?
Yes, and it's just that it, the, the, the ash tree, uh, green ash, white ash, black ash, they just didn't make the five percent. If you look at your, uh, summary report-
Don't have more than five percent ash trees.
Of green ash, white ash, and black ash. Um, if I look on your summary report, um, you'll see fraxinus ash species, and it is with, fraxinus is one of the top five genus that is in the city, yes. There, there, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me right now, but it's, uh, it's on your, um, it's on your write-up.
Page two.
Yep.
Three of the first highlights.
I, while we're on, I think the ash tree, didn't we have a presentation a while back about some disease coming?
Emerald ash borer.
It's the ash.
Mm-hmm, and it's, it's, it is here and it's present in the city, it is affecting your trees, yes, yep.
So is that, is that mentioned in the report here anywhere?
Um, it is not, that would be involved in a, like, an emerald ash borer management plan or a tree management plan. We would actually, we could actually look at your ash population and say, these are your ash, this is the concentration, this is how we would suggest that you work through it, that sort of thing. But you can, you can pull out from that summary report what your, what your percent of the population is of ash.
Which is not as large as these other percent.
Right, yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so moving on to size distribution, another thing that we can pull out of inventory is, uh, where your diameters, like your, your trunk diameter, trunk diameter is at four and a half feet, um, where they, where they stand. Um, and this kind of gives you a relative age, um, of, of your population. So you see that, um, thirty percent is near to six diameter, uh, forty-seven percent is six to eighteen diameter and so on and so forth. You see a red line there, it trends down from forty percent, thirty percent, twenty, and ten. What we suggest is that for every mature tree that you have, every tree that's greater than twenty-four inches, you have four trees that are young, recently planted trees. So city is trending, yes, on that line, it is a, it's, it's mashing that line, even though forty percent is somewhat high, that's fine, but it, you'll, you'll see that natural trend. What we suggest is just continue planting trees and proactively, um, maintain your mature trees to keep them around as long as possible to keep that trend up, okay? So that's something that we can pull from an inventory. And then you also have relative condition, the majority of your trees you see would, are in fair condition, that's fine. A lot of cities end up that way when you do inventories, the only thing that we suggest is you see that the good is circled, we suggest that you try to push your trees into that good, uh, condition, and the way you do that is by developing a proactive maintenance program, routinely pruning your trees, staying on top of the condition, getting those young, established, maturing trees as healthy as possible, okay? So, those are things that we could pull from inventory to help you establish goals and, um, and build that proactive program. All right, so then on the back, we talk about the prioritized maintenance and, um, yeah, the prioritized maintenance. Every tree we looked at, we either decided that the tree should be pruned or it should be removed, and removals would be because there's decay in the tree, you know, it's failing, it's dying, you know, all sorts of things. We prioritized every maintenance that we did, every removal, every pruning, and we did that by a risk factor, it's a, it's a quantitative risk factor. What you see in front of you is actually, we, I put it in, in words, simple of reading, um, severe risk would be a risk rating of a ten or a nine, high risk would be a risk rating of a eight or seven, moderate risk, six, five, low risk, three, four. Every tree has a risk to it, okay? It's just a matter of the sizes of effects that is present, the potential for failure that's present, or the frequency of, of human occupation around the trees that is present, it's based on, uh, based on the activity around streets, that sort of thing. So we see in the first category, tree removal, um, what we want to focus on is those severe and high-risk trees. Uh, overall, there's eight hundred and nine trees that are there for removal, but four hundred and forty-three of those are severe and high-risk. So we say, focus on those first, get those, you know, off the streets, that sort of thing, replace those, um, that, that can be replaced, okay? Then we look at pruning, the next line, severe and high-risk trees, again, those are the ones we want you to focus on first and priority, they're the highest priority, there's seven hundred and seventy trees there. Then you go into the next two lighter categories, where you have a seven-year routine pruning cycle and a three-year young tree training pruning cycle. The seven-year pruning cycle is for mature trees, it can range from a five-year pruning cycle, six-year pruning cycle, seven-year pruning cycle, depends on your resources, what you have available, money, time, human pa, human manpower, that sort of thing. Um, and, but I just did the simple math, seven years comes out to pruning about a thousand trees a year, okay? So after you get rid of all your severe and high-risk trees, to move into a more proactive program, we suggest pruning about a seventh of the population a year, depending on what that cycle would be. Then you have your young trees, young trees to worry about, we recommend, we would generally recommend a three-year pruning program for that. And the reason why it's not a seven or, or five or six or seven is that those are young trees, those are more vigorous trees, they're wanting to grow, get established, that sort of thing, they just need more time in them, that sort of thing. And the reason why we want to prune those is to promote their good structure, get them into the good condition as, as best we can, okay? And then down to the bottom, we have tree planting. Um, the four bullet points down at the bottom that includes mortal, uh, natural mortality, ash tree replacement, uh, vacant sites, and then tree and stump removal replacement. All four of those go into the first bullet point, that in general, you can say that to keep a, your population high and to replace all your removals, it would be about four hundred and seventy-five trees a year to replace. So that's all, you know, this is all just taken from the inventory, you can go into so much more depth, um, but now that you have an inventory, what is suggested the city might do is to do a tree management plan. This would help you develop your goals, help you develop your policies, and set you on a course for a sustainable forest, okay? Questions?
Have more than two thousand trees in the city?
Sure, yeah. Um, the trees here that we're only talking about are the trees that are within the street right-of-way. Um, it depend, it depends on what your GIS information says, but in general, you know, there's, if, if a street right-of-way says it's sixty feet, thirty feet from the middle of the road out, it could be, um, from the experience that I have working on inventory, it can be to the back of the sidewalk, it can be, um, twenty feet into someone's front yard, that sort of thing, it's just, it's the street right-of-way.
That represent private owner trees?
Hmm?
Does that represent private owner trees?
Right, yep, it's within the city property, so, yep.
And what about the geography? Does this cover the entire city limits?
Yes, it, it covers the entire city limits except for your major, you know, your state roads, county roads, that sort of thing, yes.
Question, just wondering, uh, where in the risk factor do the trees that are full, but they've had the L shape hacked in them from the utility companies?
It, it, it depends, uh, some, some trees take to it somewhat, it's gonna have a higher risk because the balance, the tree balance is gonna be off a little bit, um, but it depends if decay has crept in there or if it had a structural issue to it, so I mean, it's hard to say where in this severe, high, moderate risk might be, but it's, and also the size. It's probably not gonna be a low risk, it's probably gonna be a moderate, high-ish, maybe even severe, so.
The, uh, the risky trees, which, uh, well, it looks like it's got, it represents, uh, roughly sixteen percent of these trees on the city properties.
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to do some figuring to, to be able to give you, um, an honest answer for that, but I can say that we've so far have removed a hundred sixteen dead and hazardous trees this year, and of that, forty-three percent are ash. And that's totaling, and I'm pulling this out from my head right now, around, probably around sixty-three thousand dollars. And that's about what we've been spending a year for the last, oh, maybe two or three years, removing the dead and hazardous trees. And that's, that's how we're handling this, it's, as Erin has said, we are tackling the dead, the critical trees, we want, because it's, it's, it's a public safety issue. So we're, we're going through the inventory and we are, we, we're actually going back out and evaluating those trees again, and then we tag the doors and let people know that these trees have to be removed because they're critical. And so we're, we're, as each phase, we've done each phase, we've gone through that, and then after that, we go back and we look at the poor trees, when unfortunately, because of the drought last year, the, the trees that were poor are now critical in some cases, so it's just a vicious circle. And then also the ash trees last year weren't too bad, this year, they're getting much worse, so we're having to really pay attention to the ash trees. So to remove, I, I would say, I think we've, we did a, a rough estimate, to remove all the ash trees that we have in, on public property would be about two hundred thousand dollars. And I'm just, I'm trying, I'm pulling that out of, some cities are devastated, Fort Wayne is devastated, they have no money to do this, they, and, and, and the biggest problem would be private property. You know, we can, we have about a thousand trees in the public right-of-way, we've tried to treat some of the park trees, and we're, we are treating some of the ash trees, like at the Depot Plaza, we don't want to lose them all at once. But private property, that's an issue, because a, a lot of people, I've, I've talked to people who have huge ash trees on their private property, will be thousands of dollars to remove these trees. They're gonna need a place to take the wood, it's, it's, it's coming down the road, it's going to get worse. Fort Wayne have, they have an ordinance that states that you cannot have a dead tree on your private property. By code enforcement, you have to get that tree down, and he said, the, the city forester there has told me, we, we don't even, we can't even deal with that anymore. It's just, um, it's too hard. So this inventory helps us, it, it gives us a tool to at least try to address what we can and, and keep things as safe as we can.
Thank you very much, Brett.
Belinda, when you're removing the trees or the dead trees, are you replacing them on the spot with a new tree or what's the policy there?
No, we are not, we are removing the tree, we leave the stump, the park department tries to get the stump as they can, and, um, usually in the wintertime, that's a, that's something they do. And then we, um, try to work with Tree Lafayette, they're, they're doing some infill, trying to help that way.
I'm a council about the possibility of the incurring quite a expense at some point in time.
Right, if you have an ash tree, my, my suggestion is if it's healthy, treat it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just information I've received, uh, this drought last year may be even seven years down the road before we even know that some of these trees are not gonna make it, is that correct?
That's possible, I, I, evergreens show stress real fast, we've lost about thirty evergreens in, in certain areas in the city due to the drought. Um, some trees, it takes, large trees, it will take several years to show signs of stress from the drought. I don't, do you have a year? Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it could be two years, three years, four years. That's same thing with construction, you can go through and you can damage some of the roots in the construction though- That's same thing with construction. You can go through and you can damage some of the roots in the construction zone. In the next year, the tree still looks fine, but two years later, it starts to die because the root damage is finally, the canopy doesn't get the nutrients.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your report, both of you folks. Now, it comes time for public comment. Is there any public comment concerning anything that has gone on this evening?
Excuse me, Perry Bobby, thirty-seven hundred, Red Bud. First of all, I was unable to attend the chili cook-off you had last night. I made a batch of chili, but, uh... Well, I took it over to some friends and we... So, I'll send the, the city clerk some money for the, her friend, for the, that, uh... No, I was, I gotta, I give you that, I'll give you it next month. And, uh, I, uh, are you leaving? Uh, first, I have a question about a tree. Okay, 'cause I have a, a tree in my yard I, I have a question about, uh... I don't really have too much, I have other things, but I'm not, I'm gonna keep it under my hat for now. Just have a great night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? I was going to give you until eight forty kickoff time for the Bears and Packers, but that's it. Mr. Heidi?
I moved to a germ.
All those favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.